I'd like to call the Monday, February 26th Shakopee School Board Business Meeting to order. Sarah, would you please take the role?
Bowerman.
Yes, ma'am.
Allison.
Here.
Mikian.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Doctor.
Almost here.
It's Washington.
Good evening. Okay, we'll move on to item number two, and that is Pledge of Allegiance.
Hail, pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where its stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item number three, and that is our favorite section, which is we are Shakopee Schools Good News Items. Got a couple visitors here today, and I would like to first call up those that are here for CEEF. You got a couple seats, folks? Come on up to the table. I don't want to read this until you're all seated. Would you like to introduce yourselves?
Yes. My name is Kristen Kohler.
Kristen.
And I'm Joanne Block.
Hello, Joanne. Thanks for being here.
And we have a fellow member back here, sorry I'm pointing out Julie.
Who's that?
She is also on board.
Well, come on up, Julie.
Oh, no, I'm it.
Sure? All right, so if you will allow me to read this introductory remark here. The Shakopee Education Endowment Foundation, CEEF, has awarded Shakopee Public Schools $24,400 in grants to directly benefit our students. Some of the grants include enriching reading for all students, developing interpersonal communication skills, building fine motor skills, and photography studio equipment. There's a list of examples attached. Since 1992, CEEF has donated more than $339,000 in grants to fund projects that support our students.
Stealing my thunders.
Stealing your thunder.
And that thunders actually won't. That does not include this year's awards, so at any rate, good evening, members of the Shakopee School Board and Superintendent Anger. Joanne and I, and Julie, are excited to be here tonight representing the Shakopee Educational Endowment Foundation. This is my third year as a board member. Joanne recently joined.
She's my first year.
Yep, just this past fall, and we're very proud to represent a group that has such positive impact within our district. Each year, Shakopee teachers are able to submit grant proposals for creative educational projects that they would like to implement in their classrooms. Each proposal is for a single project, up to a $2,000 award. The proposals are written by staff and reviewed by building principals or department supervisors for approval before being submitted to CEEF. After the submission deadline of October 31st, the grant proposals are reviewed by the CEEF Board of Directors for consideration. Since its inception in 1992, CEEF has awarded 475 grants totaling more than $363,000 for teacher initiatives that enrich learning opportunities for our students. For the 2017-2018 academic year, CEEF has selected 23 proposals, and they're listed here, from the 29 submitted with funding totaling $24,400. The grants funded this year will enhance the educational experience at every school building in the district, and they represent nearly every content area: math, sciences, arts, music, reading, technology, special education, and some extend beyond our schools and into the community as well. For example, Sarah Connell, a teacher at Sun Path, requested funding for items to help her kindergarteners and seniors at a local retirement center to develop and retain their fine motor skills. We really appreciate the cross-generational learning that will benefit both our students and seniors in our community. The board is also excited about the inclusive engineering connecting Students of All Abilities Phase II project. This is a follow-up to Phase I, which CEEF funded last year and is spearheaded by TJ Henderson and Stephanie Bentley at our junior highs. So here's how the engineering project works. Students in general education engineering classes apply real-world problem-solving strategies by researching, planning, designing, developing, and modifying products for a real-life target group which also happens to be their peers. Students in special education, with the help of their parents, case managers, and related service providers, will apply self-advocacy and disability awareness skills to describe their physical impairments, engage in the planning and development of the product, practice communication skills to discuss pros and cons of prototypes, and utilize the final product in their daily lives and/or in the classroom. Let me give you an example. Actually, I'm going to pass some pictures here before I do that. I've got a couple from the senior center, and then there's one that I'm going to describe right now. Mason, a current fifth grader at Swinging Elementary, doesn't have much use of his right arm due to a stroke suffered in utero, resulting in partial paralysis of the right side of his body. He loves to play hockey, but he had a hard time holding on to a stick with his right hand. Our students, thanks to this program, engineered a hockey stick that included a strap that helps hold his stick in place. Mason now has a killer slapshot. While this doesn't directly help him in school, I would argue that Mason's confidence has been boosted, and that helps him in the classroom as well as on the ice. How cool is that? Just a moment. Without the foundation's annual teacher grant program, these types of projects would not be happening, and this is why we serve on this board. The opportunity that CEEF has to assist in enriching the educational experience of Shakopee students would not be possible without the generous support of individuals, families, alumni, district staff, civic organizations, and businesses in our community. We extend our profound gratitude to those who make our work possible. And so, it is our privilege, on behalf of the Shakopee Educational Endowment Foundation Board of Directors, to present this check for $24,400 to the Shakopee School District. We look forward to hearing about the learning opportunities created by these innovative projects.
I can hold the check.
Yeah. So, one final thing. On March 7th, Shakopee Rue Hall is holding a mango event, as they have done for so many organizations here in Shakopee. All proceeds that evening will benefit CEEF, so look on Facebook for that activity. We would love to have the support of you here, and we do rely on donations to continue this program.
Hold the date, someone's got it on Facebook.
It's March 7th. Sorry, Granny. March 7th. It's like 6:30 to 8:00.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Awesome. Well, although it's not a $24,000 check, on behalf of the school board, we would like to present you, CEEF, for this certificate. Really thank you for your, well, thank you for this, but also just for your attention and excellence in education, and thanks for helping our Shakopee students get a little bit more out of their day than we would have otherwise, so we appreciate it.
Thanks.
Can we get some photos?
Thank you.
All right, you guys got to get up here. Julie, come up here.
I'll just swing right around.
I'll just take her.
Go this way. I need you away from the TV, sorry.
Oh, okay.
All right. We're enjoying this.
Swing back. Go left wing. There you go.
One, two.
All right. Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, CEEF.
All right, number two. We have another guest in the audience. Charlie, would you mind coming up? All right, the Midwakatin Sioux Community has awarded a $100,000 grant to our district for expanded mental health services, which will benefits the district's preschool and high school students and parents. The grant will help the district provide additional services to help identify and support students struggling with mental health issues. They will also expand their education classes to help parents understand mental health, learn strategies for supporting their children, and assist them in seeking any necessary resources. Charlie, on behalf of, well, actually, I'm going to turn this over to you.
They just made a couple of comments, Mr. Chair. We're very fortunate to have Chairman Rick here tonight because he, along with the other people in the tribe, have, a number of months ago, offered an opportunity to gain some funds to help our students, probably a year ago. Fortunately, at a scale meeting this fall, they reminded me of that opportunity, which I wasn't aware of, to be honest with you. But it was $100,000, and they asked for us to print a couple of proposals that they could choose. And we knew that there were a couple of areas that they have been very influential with helping the community as a whole with, and so we tried to put together the two proposals for them to look at, actually grant us the money, because they needed to be able to be assured that we were going to use it for something that they believed in, and something that would help our students. It couldn't be used to supplant other activities that we were already doing, it had to be, you know, some new efforts. And so we put together two options. One is the one that you see in front of us. Another one had to do with nutrition. And I want to compliment the chairman and other people there, that they went out of their way to make sure that we were aware that this money was available, to take the time to evaluate the two proposals that we offered, and to pick one that will have, I believe, a significant impact for some of our kids who are struggling because of mental health, or to help families that have members that are in that situation. So, this wasn't something that we went to them about. They offered this opportunity. We just took advantage of it, and great thanks should go to the chairman and the other people for meeting this need, and we'll let him comment, but we're very appreciative.
Well, thank you. And I did not come as well prepared. But thank you for that introduction. You know, we also did a, I believe it was a $25,000 for the Indian American kids that are here. We, but you weren't the sole recipient, so then we also did in Paralegal. So we did 125 in each school. And that's part of the funner part of our job. I'm just like, I'm kind of happy for you to get a, what do you call it at the beginning? The fun, good news. We don't always get to have good news. I mean, it's, we should appreciate that. But, you know, we have about 300 students under the age, or kids under the age of 18. And so, we have a lot of, a lot of issues that we're working through with our students. Some go here, some go to Paralegal. A lot of them go to private schools or the international school. And, well, we just, we just always want to be able to help, because we know you guys can always use funding for additional things, so. So that was our way to help, and I'm just glad we get to, and I'm glad you picked, like you said, they said there was two options to use the money for nutrition and mental health. And we're doing, we've been doing a, we've had about a $10 million campaign for, for seeds, it's called Seeds of Native Health, and that's kind of a nationwide deal to support Indian country, or mostly Indian students, or nutrition, Indian economy, sort of, I would say. But, but yeah, this, so we feel like we've got a lot of that covered. I don't know how it benefits the schools, but the mental health, I think, with, with a lot of the things that are going on in our communities, or your community, I think we can always use some extra help, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Chairman, on behalf of Shakopee Public Schools, thank you, and keep in mind, thank you for helping us help your students, we can't help our students, and it really takes a village, so thanks for that.
Sure.
Okay, ready?
He's Charlie. I'm going to look up here.
I will.
For your guys' knowledge and anybody watching, I do follow your Twitter, the Tribe's Twitter account, and it's really incredible and informative, the work that you guys are doing, so I would encourage you guys to follow that.
I don't know what.
You didn't mean to. I'm telling you a funny story. So, if you've ever noticed, we have a wind turbine in our community, and it's rather large, but we bought it at the heightened demand of getting a wind turbine. We had to have one for some reason. It wasn't me, but I get to take credit for it. But it literally, you couldn't buy one. We bought this from China. It came over on a slow boat from China, and it's been nothing but problems. And so, it's been not running for a year and a half. And so, and every week, I ask the question, when is it going to start? And about a week ago, they said, they sent me a picture of it turning, and so we finally got it fixed. And I said, I was so happy that I'm going to start tweeting. But we do, I just, give ourselves a plug. We do about $20 million in donations a year, and it's mostly to Indian country. There's a, there's a large need out there in the Indian country still, but we also do it to local organizations, and playgrounds, and different things, trails. But we get a, we have a demand of about $60 million a year. That's, that's what we get requests, so it's kind of a full-time job, just to see what we can do and help, so, but thank you for that.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chairman. All right. I'd like to call up Principal Coitas. Oh, she's in the house. All right. Eagle Creek receives the Hometown Solar Grant Award. The Minnesota Municipal Power Agency has announced Eagle Creek Elementary School has been selected as a recipient of the 2018 NMPA Energy Education Hometown Solar Grant Award. Under the grant, the agency will help teach our students firsthand about how sunlight is converted into electricity, and how unique characteristics, and the unique characteristics of solar power. Congratulations to Eagle Creek.
Thank you. And we will also be having some solar panels installed at Eagle Creek, so the kids can see how that works and see what they're standing, instead of just talking about the short pictures. Super excited. Thanks to Kane Smith, our buildings and ground, for also working on this grant with Eagle Creek.
Any questions for Julie?
What's this related to kickoff?
Ask me that, David.
Well, you said, you said you got panels.
Oh, sure.
When you see this coming, you're going to question.
Awesome. So we're meeting on Thursday, and I will know more, and I can send you an email to that. We're meeting Thursday to find out the details of when we can roll this out. You know, obviously, the snow needs to be done first, and so we'll find out Tuesday their timeline.
Likely to this school year, or is it going to take maybe a little?
No, not until next, likely the construction this summer and kickoff activities in the fall, but I don't have an exact detail.
Perfect.
Yeah. Great. That's really cool. Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Josie. And to thank you, we have this fantastic suitable program certificate, and now to Eagle Creek Elementary School. Thank you very much for your work in that area. Thanks to Kane, wherever Kane is.
Thank you.
All right. All right. That brings to, oh, do we have more? Nope, that's it. That brings to a close the Good News, I guarantee there's more Good News, but that's the end of it. Okay, we will move on to item four, and that is Consideration of the Agenda as Presented. Do we have any additions? Okay?
I'll make that one.
Second, any discussion? None? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We'll move on to item five, and that is Consent Items.
I'll make a motion to approve consent.
And seconded by Angela. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. We will move on to item six, and that is Old Business Discussion Items. And we're going to turn this over to Superintendent Anger to talk about our district school safety.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm just going to reiterate a statement that was recently reported and that we shared with the local press, but every day in our schools, we strive to educate our students in the safest environment possible. Within our schools and school events, we do our best to keep our students, staff, and visitors physically and emotionally safe. Emergency plans are in place at each one of our buildings. Additionally, our practice drills held each year, five lockdown drills, live fire drills, and one tornado drill, combined with our partnership of the Shakopee Police and Fire Departments, contribute greatly to our efforts to keep our students safe while in our care. We work incredibly hard on safety and security in our schools, as does every Minnesota school district. But I really have to say, the plans and things that have been implemented in the Shakopee schools are above grade and above the norm. I'll mention just a few of the things. We've, we've been a part of the ALICE program, and a bad extensive ALICE program training for all of our staff members. And again, ALICE stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. We've implemented the Lobby Guard System within our entryways. We've added security cameras. Approximately 237 cameras are installed throughout the school district. Sensors, which alert front office when any doors open or are propped open, are at every entrance and exit from the Shakopee schools. Door access, in the 2017-18 school year, we upgraded our door access to a more user-friendly system. And we have some other future things that are going to be happening, too. A lockdown card reader system. In the 2018-19 school year, we'll be implementing a new card reader system in which the cardholder will have the ability to lock down buildings automatically. And also a system called InformaCast. It's a mass notification system that sends out audio, text, and images to mobile and on-premises devices. It increases the speed, reach, and success rate of emergency notification communications to get critical information to the people that need it. And I can't say, I'm in regular communication with Police Chief Tate. As a matter of fact, I just talked to him today, again, and Friday I talked to him, so it kind of gives an example of the regularity in which we're working with, with our local police department, and they're wonderful to work with. And we are constantly looking to improve. And obviously, with the recent shootings in Florida, this is, we've had heightened awareness and sensitivity throughout our community, and we've been addressing every idea and issue that's coming from community members, and yet, we feel like we have great things in place, but we have to keep improving, because our job is to educate our kids in a safe environment. Any questions at all?
I do have a question. Is there any organization, or vendor, or company that would or could come in and give an assessment on our preparedness, generally speaking, the cameras and everything, to see if we have any vulnerabilities and gaps, if you will?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And one thing Chief Tate and I talked about was reconvening our emergency committee, our district emergency planning committee, this summer, and that was actually one of the considerations we talked about, is doing an assessment or an audit to see how we're doing, and see if the things we have in place are doing what they should be doing, and also see if there are any gaps.
It's not a question, it's more a comment, it's just a reminder that part of the referendum we approved a couple of years ago included funding specifically for security. A lot of the things you're talking about here, or several of the things you mentioned, are reflective or a result of that funding, so we're fulfilling that commitment.
That's a good point, Reggie. You know, a quick recap of some of those would include, you know, $85,000 for the visitor management system, $1.15 million for the card readers, door contacts, security cameras. Yeah, the list goes on and on, but we're doing exactly what the community asked us to do.
Any questions, Collins, over here? Okay. Thanks, Eric. We'll move on to item 6.2, Enrollment Updates.
Yes, sir. And this is another thing that I just wanted to get more public, from feedback from, from our board and from community members. We really feel like we need to get back to doing some regular enrollment updates, and because there's a misconception out there that our enrollment is constantly growing in our school district. Well, it's not necessarily the case. We're actually down some numbers, and I should have brought my reading glasses with me here, but, oh, thank you. We've got the cheaters, great things to worry here. But, so in our October counts, our district total was 8,216, and we're now at 8,126. Now, a lot of those numbers are, you can attribute to the kids at the Alternative Learning Center graduating, many of them that were there, so that accounts for many of those. But there are some patterns in other grade levels that are kind of unusual, and so, but we just want you to know that enrollment really drives our funding, and we have to keep a close eye on it. And the misnomer that we're constantly growing is something that we can't stay in that place. That's, that's where we were five, 10 years ago, gaining 200, 300 kids a school year, but that's not where we're at. That's not the reality right now. So, we'll be sharing these numbers, and John McBrum and I have been looking at them really closely, and that's, they're a driver for the budget moving forward. So just wanted to share that with you and with the public as well. Any questions on that, at all?
I appreciate you looking at the law.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and Angela, it's really going to be interesting to follow these patterns and try to identify, okay, what's driving that number there?
Well, it's also evident here that this is largely secondary, it's really primarily high school, plus it's non-elementary, at least just looking at these numbers. It's not an elementary issue, if you will. Well, they also do the horrible projections we are going to level off, and I think that's the phase that we're in at this point, so this is not terribly strong.
No, it's not, but then you get an unusual number, like, you know, down 10 kids in first grade, and that might just be a fluke, but that's, you know, a third of a teacher there, more than a third of a teacher, which is kind of weird, but it's just going to be important for us to follow all these numbers.
Anything else? All right. This is then I'd like to call up, Mr. Woski is here, is Dr. Yerdomovu. I don't see anyone in the audience. So Dave and Superintendent Anger are going to give us an update on the intra-district and open enrollment procedures?
Yeah, and I'm just going to make a statement, then we can direct questions towards Dave and I, and Dave can sure chime in as well. Recently, a team of administrators sat down to start working on drafting language to align schools and create consistency on our transfer requests. So, examples of a parent asking their child to go from one elementary to another elementary in the school district. It's been a little willy-nilly in the past, and we haven't really been consistent. So, language is currently being drafted to include these following areas: school assignment, open enrollment, intra-district transfer requests, district-initiated transfers, usually that's for special needs kids, or kids that have any set of special needs, transportation, process and timeline and detail, exemptions based on pre-existing circumstances, specific conditions like moving during the school year, moving over the summer, childcare location, excessive transitions, boundary change considerations. And so there are a lot of factors that go into this conversation, and we just kind of went all over the place in our first time meeting with this group, but we do feel like we need to centralize this process and make it consistent, so parents know what to expect when they're asking about going from one school to another. So, anything else to add, Dave?
Just saying, this was particularly pressing, it felt like, during that attendance area work. And then, so it's not as maybe urgent as it was then, but having this kind of determined before we go back into that again in the near future, I think will be valuable. And then, secondly, I think it's important to get this done, given that we'll have three schools at or near, or at or above capacity, being West, Eagle Creek, and Jackson. Again, you saw the numbers, so not exactly sure where they're going to land, but it's not as urgent as it was, but it's still going to be important going forward, so people understand how it works going in, and that they feel like everybody's being treated fairly. And you asked at the work session, if, you know, we talked about kind of keeping this rolling until we get it done, and you said, are you sure you can have something ready in two weeks? And I said, yeah, we just get in a room and shut the door, and we'll have it done. And we did that, and we didn't have something completely done for you, but I can And we did that, and we didn't have something completely done for you, but I think we have a good start. So I think you had more insight on that than I did.
What is the timeline for presenting, I think, back to the full board?
Let Gary.
Um, we've got a rough draft already, but it's really rough of communication. But I think within another month, we'll need to have it pretty much down.
And so I don't know how that would work procedurally, if we'd email that, send it out in a board book ahead of time, and give them time to review it, or before that, or how you want to do that?
Yeah, I think we should have time by our next learning session to have something for you, and then maybe be able to put it into place at the next business meeting.
March 19th, that gives you enough time?
I apparently don't know.
I'm just, I'll leave that up to your good offices to figure it out.
Yeah, the sooner we can get the information out to the parents, the better.
I think it's important.
Okay. It's important that it's done right.
Yes. Yep. I think that's it.
Any questions?
Not yet, there will be.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. All right, move on to item 6.4, District Financial Advisor Update.
Yes, so I would like to introduce Jody Zesba and Shelby McQuaid from Aylers. They can come in and sit down up here, but I'm recommending that as a district, and this is not an item to be moved upon, but I'm recommending that we utilize Aylers Hall. Thank you. The reading glasses are here. As our financial advising company moving forward, they used to be the company that our district worked with when Mr. McBrum was superintendent. I worked with them in Zambroda-Mazepa last year, and feel like the services that they provide match where we are going as a district and fit the needs that we have. So I'm going to let Jody take the mic here and just tell a little bit about Aylers, and it may fortify some of the reasons behind the decision.
Sounds great. Thank you. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight. We certainly are excited about the opportunity to work with the school district again. As Gary mentioned, we served as the financial advisors the entire tenure of John McBrum, and then with the change in leadership, haven't been working with you since that point in time. But we definitely feel fortunate for the years that we were able to work with you, and we think we had great years of working relationship together for many, many, many years. So we did have a detailed conversation about our services and some of the things that we believe differentiate our team from other competitors. And I'll ask Shelby to hand out the documents that we talked through as part of the finance committee. We definitely had questions from the finance committee members, which I think was really helpful for people to get to know a little bit more about us. And the first document that you'll see talks about the difference, what we call the Aylers' difference. And I think the item that I would highlight is that we have a team of nine people with great background and experience. We think that our team has experience that is second to none, and we call it unparalleled experience, as you'll see at the top of the Aylers' difference page there. So we have four individuals who have background working in public accounting, on school district audits, serving as finance directors at large and small school districts. We have a couple of people who have been involved in the legislative process, working with House. Shelby's background is working with the Senate on the education financing bill, as well as the tax bill. And lots of the funding formulas, as you know, have impact on property taxes, and she knows the property tax system inside and out. I'm always impressed when we do presentations together, she'll get really obscure questions, and she can answer them right off the bat, so it's great. So we had a little bit of a, Zambroda probably doesn't see these.
I hope they're not.
No. So there's an individual who is, can be a little tough at Zambroda in terms of the level of service that she expects, and the questions and her needs. And Shelby just got an email from her, I'm proud to say, last Friday, saying how thrilled she was to be working with Aylers again. They too had switched financial advisors due to a change in leadership. Gary brought us back in when he was working at Zambroda, and she sent a really nice message back to Shelby, thanking her for the service that she provided, saying she really missed the handholding that we're able to provide to school districts, and our love of support, and the fact that we get back in touch with people very quickly when they have questions. We know you have lots of questions, we want to be a resource to you, we want you to get your questions answered as quickly as we can possibly do that. So hopefully you'll feel that same level of customer service that Zambroda is feeling once you get back into the Aylers' fold again, hopefully sooner rather than later. So again, we're thrilled to be here tonight, to present any information that would be helpful to you, if you have any questions about our level of support, our experience, our expertise, what differentiates us. And then, of course, there's a list of the services that we provide. And we think we offer a wide array of services, and we have the individuals on our team that can really help you with creative solutions, and, you know, any, whatever comes up. I said that I get questions sometimes on things as miniscule as UFR's financial coding, because I worked in the school business office at South Washington County Schools for 15 years. So there's just lots of different questions that we get asked on a day-to-day basis, and we love engaging with our clients, we want them to contact us, and we feel like we can better serve you in the long run if we're aware of what you have going on on a day-to-day basis. So anything from the meeting earlier that you think it would be important to emphasize to the full board, I'm happy to touch on any of those types of topics that we've already discussed.
Well, I hope that was an accurate question, but I'll throw this out because it's important for the board to know, as well as perhaps the community, and that's how your fees work.
Sure.
And one of the things that I was impressed by is that, and you gave me several examples of situations where you'll have clients call and ask a question, and you answer the question, clock is not ticking, meter's not running.
Correct.
You also made it clear that there are certain services you can buy that are project-oriented, and you'll let us know if that's something we wish to engage you for, what the cost would be. But it's not like we're signing up on a retainer basis.
Correct.
That we're drawing against. So that's, there's no cost for the relationship, other than the things we choose to engage you for.
Right.
And I found that very reassuring, the level of all of your experience, and the fact that you were here many years ago as well, is somewhat reassuring. I think when I was with the board, it was very first time, so I appreciate that. So that's something I think is important for the rest of the board, I'll be aware of.
Questions for Jody or Shelby?
One of the questions that I asked, thank you for my thought, is what is the onboarding process like?
So we generally will go through the services that we have, much like you've seen tonight on this page here, and just kind of talk through what your needs are at this point in time. We do think that it's important to engage you in a couple of things right off the bat, which we would probably talk to you about. And we talked about maybe doing that as part, doing that with the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee, too, your CFA committee. So if that would be something that would be helpful, we'd be happy to present, to kind of go through that information there. But at a minimum, we would want to work with your finance staff and Gary to make sure that we're addressing your needs as you see them now, and then we're prepared for what you might need in the future, so.
I also feel like this is a critical time for us, as we hopefully bring on a new finance director as well, to have another set of eyes of several former finance directors, which Jody is, and several other people, and Shelby with her expertise, just to look at things so that we know what we're looking at within the budget.
I'll make one other comment, too, that I get, I found helpful. This is not mutually exclusive from the school finance services that we've received historically, the model we've acquired over time. So it's not like, oh, now we're going with, they're complimentary. We're still going to use that model, we're still using it intimately now. They're in a more advisory capacity, but obviously will familiarize themselves with us and the systems that we use. So again, it's not a either-or type situation.
Yeah, we, the most important thing is that we want to know you have a tool in place that you're using, and so that would be our recommendation if you didn't have a tool in place. So whatever tool is most comfortable to you, as long as you have a long-term financial planning model in place, and we can talk about that, then too, should you be refunding bonds or issuing new bonds in the future, that's a really important component for the bond reading agencies. They put pretty heavy emphasis on that. They want to make sure that you're using, that you have a tool in place, and that you're using it and making your decisions based upon that information. So we think it's really important, and we know at those points in time, when you're moving forward on any type of, like I said, refunding bond or regular bond issue, that it's really important to the credit reading agencies, too.
I know this was said before, but, you know, I'll reiterate it again. It's just a different time for us right now, and a different financial service provider is really a smart move, I think, for Shakopee Public Schools, so I actually look forward to our future engagement.
Thank you. Yes, we're thrilled. We, again, we thought we had a really nice, long-term relationship with you, and we're very happy to be of service to you back then, and are really, really looking forward to re-engaging with you in the future.
Anything else? Thanks for coming.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on to item seven, which is old business action items, and we will start with 7.1, and that is officially accepting, recognizing and accepting Mary Romansky's retirement. Unfortunately, Mary is not with us tonight. However, I do know that there are comments that folks would like to make, so I'd like to go ahead and have, ask Chairman McBrum, would you mind coming up, John, as well as Gary, and I'll let you kind of lead it off?
Yeah, I'll lead it off. It's an absolute honor to work with Mary. We're very appreciative of the services she's provided to the district through the years. The service that she's provided has not just benefited us as a school board, but every single student that's gone through the schools in her time. So I just want to say what an honor it's been to work alongside and serve alongside Mary.
Well, I go back a long way with Mary, and she was on the school board for a long time. She is one of the board members that came to my previous district to do a review in the community about whether what I said about myself was actually true or not. She was a little hard on me because I had a, I had a green button in my office that said Vote Ventura. It wasn't that I necessarily wanted Mr. Ventura to get in as governor, but I was actually promoting a vote against the two ends of the spectrum on the political parties. And she kind of grilled me on that about why I would, why I would choose to have a Ventura button. So I explained it to her, and I must have met her qualifications because I did get hired. But Mary, during the time that I was here, and that's really what I can speak to, the 11 years that I, that I worked in the district, Mary did yeoman's work on the Board of Education. She is very good with policy, which is one of the things that I really didn't like. So having someone that would champion that was very positive. She was a great supporter of the school's communication, whether that's the calendar or the, you know, one thing after another. She wanted to make sure that we were communicating with the public, and really took a lead role with a number of bond issues and the different things that we were asking for during the time that I served. So I've got a special place in my heart for Mary. She was very dedicated. She really cared about kids. You could see that with her effort, with her backpack effort. And in the community, she, she made great contributions as well. And we just wish her nothing but the best right now. And it was good for me to get a chance to connect with her when I got back, and not that I had lost connection, but it had been a little bit of time. When you move out of town, it's a little more difficult. But I found it to be very refreshing again to see her. So I'm sure all of us wish her nothing but the best, and she, she did make a great contribution to this community.
I'll just chime in, too. I speak with Mary regularly on the phone, as recently as last week, and she shot me an email last week, a little heads up about something, and so she's doing well, and wanted me to share that message.
I'll just throw out there, I can echo everything that Gary said, not miss out on John, because I haven't worked with Mary that long. But one thing that I appreciate the most about Mary, I think, is the personal touch that she put on thank you gifts, the number of quilts, or gift bags, or products, something personalized that she didn't just take care of the school district, she made sure that whatever individual was leaving the district or needed to be rewarded on behalf of the district had some sort of a Mary Romansky personal touch, and those were really cool things. And that's, that was genuinely from the heart. So that's one thing about Mary that I will definitely not forget, is that spirit and that the heart and the generosity that she had.
Yeah, I would echo that. I consider myself fortunate that when I first joined the board, Mary was a long time to remember, and a great mentor. To your point about the personalization, when we came up with the new logo, the new tagline, she had just digitized the new logo and was able to put it on a big black hoodie. And so I was able to put this massive, long space in my body to work advertising for the district, all because Mary thought that was a good idea, and was willing to do the labor. So that personal touch, the wisdom and guidance that she brought, the passion for kids, I mean, on top of serving on the school board, to start a nonprofit to help hungry kids, I just can't say nothing. Very thankful of Mary. So honored to have served with her for so long.
So I appreciate having sort of Mary, I guess, on this board the longest, I'm in my third term with Mary now, and found her cyclopedic from the knowledge of this district. Her institutional knowledge of the teachers and the staff, of the kids, but just of the programs was phenomenal, and I was always in awe of that. And I had a very good opportunity over the number of years to serve with Mary, and I'm very grateful for that. I wore this back, to your point, in Mary's honor, I was hoping to see her tonight, because this is actually that logo, and she put it on this shirt for me, which is very kind of her, and I'm very grateful for it. But she would be missed in the sense of being on the board, was she still here? But she will not be missed in terms of her impact, because that will be long, long lasting.
Okay, if there are other comments, we do have some recommended action on here, and that is to officially accept the retirement from Mary Romansky effective January 26, 2018. And thank her for many, 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 many years of service.
Second.
John, yeah? Can you put in the second?
I would like to thank Mary just for being my, there were times early on when I got on the board, I think I was a deer in headlights, and she took my hand sometimes literally, not only just figuratively, and walked me through my first year, and I would work, I would be grateful to her for that. And you're right, her institutional knowledge just knocked me off my feet. I would call her, and she would just, she could tell me something that happened 17 years ago that was irrelevant to what we were talking about today. Amazing.
Are you taking comments from the crowd, too?
Yeah, sure. Can you come up to the microphone? Because we can record it, please.
This is just a quick little Mary trivia, and I'm glad you were here. Well, two things. One, I'm grateful to Mary, she was on the board when I was initially hired, so I have her to partially thank for the job that I have here. And secondly, this job, I don't know if you know my official title. It is Data and Testing Administrator. And Mary was a Trekkie, like a big Star Trek fan, and there was a character named Data, and she thought it would be funny if that was my actual title. So Data and Testing Administrator. And so that will be, I'm always have this special connection to Mary, and I think, I don't know if she was at a garage sale, or if she was at Dollar General or what, but just, I'll bet you in the last six weeks, I got a little, I don't think it was for Christmas, but it was a bag, a gift bag, in my office, delivered by her husband, Bob, and it was one of those little play dolls that was the Star Trek, Star Trek Data figurine. So she's still into it. Yes. So anyways, she always brought fun and that knowledge, and so I really appreciated working with Mary, too. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
I'll give a shot at that.
Oh, go ahead. Do you want to come up to the microphone?
Okay. Ashley.
Like, like Mr. McBrum, I have worked with Mary for quite some time, nearly 20 years, well, all of my tenure, 20 years. Her dedication to kids matched her dedication to staff and to the district. And something that was mentioned earlier about her recognition with quilts, I tried to kind of dabble into that, I would never have the talent that Mary has. She made a, I remember so well vividly that she made a quilt. has. She made a, I remember so well vividly that she made a quilt for my daughter Taylor when she graduated from high school and had it laid up, prepared it, had it laid out at her party and surprised me. It was wonderful. So I attempted to make her something, but I'll never match her, her great talent, not only in her stitching, but also sitting at this table.
Thank you, Sarah. All right. Any other comments? Not. We have a motion in the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, and that motion carries. All right. And while we're up, we're going to do a 7.1.2 for caller. Mr. McBrum, would you please come up again? I know, we just sat there. All right. So you, well, I know, just sit down for a second. So you have been a pillar in the community for a really, really long time. You decided you wanted to retire, and we decided we weren't quite ready for you to retire, so we had to have you come back.
Moved away.
Moved away, yes, and retired, moved away. But there are so many things I could say, and I don't want to embarrass you, so I'm not going to do that. But when Gary announced his, his medical situation, and we knew as a board that we needed to take some, some pretty significant action, the fact of the matter is there was only ever one name that all of us, I think, were in unanimous agreement on right out of the gate. And that was, if John McBrum can't, he called off the bench today, I don't know what we're going to do. So you answered the call to a district that was in need, a district that cares about you, a district that we know you care about huge. And you have been a dynamic public servant for SHOC for the last, what, it's been four or five months now. I don't know what to say other than thank you, and thank you just isn't anywhere near enough. Thank you for giving of your personal time. Thank you for taking time away from your family to come back and help care for us as a district in a time where we really needed some additional support. And I think the rest of the board members speak as well. But I didn't get the opportunity to work with you as a board member when I came in. You were, you had just departed. Other than the task force back in 2010, I got a little tease of what it might be like to work with John McBrum. And I always thought, what a cool guy. I never really knew that guy. So even though it was only four months, I am really, really honored personally that I had the opportunity to see you in action and to see the legend actually do what he does.
Might be a legend in my own mind.
You are a legend, so you're going to let me lay it on. And I just want to thank you personally for giving us that time, because it is time that we can't give back to you. And it's time that I guarantee will pay dividends to, you know, for the system we're in for years and years to come. You've helped educate not only us as board members, but our finance team. And I imagine if we walk through the district office or we walk through the buildings, there's any number of individuals that will stand up and say, this is the impact that, that John made on my life here over the last four months. So on behalf of everybody that can't say thank you, thank you for everything you've done for us.
I'll be really brief. I told my wife the other night that going back to when I was 12 years old, I've never had a harder time breaking up with someone than breaking up with you. And she laughed too. But so I just want to say, this is not going to be a breakup. John's become a, in a very short time, a mentor for me, and I'm leaning on him for a lot of things. I, I, you know, beg forgiveness to the people of the school district and the school board so that I could still tap into John here and there as we do make some difficult decisions. But also looking to the future, I know that I can text John anytime and he'll get right back to me and give me great advice. So it's beyond an honor, my friend.
My first, sorry, John, my first appointed term on the board, John, I got to serve you. And this analogy probably won't work real well, but when you came back, which I was thrilled about that you had the opportunity to do that, it's like a comfortable pair of slopers. It was just, it was just right back into it. And, and I learned so much from you in those first couple of years. And still consider you a friend, but in this space, there's nobody better. And so we were very fortunate I had you come back, and I appreciate that. And I thank you for your sacrifice and your back.
So we had a little, I had known John for years in this district and had just tremendous respect for him. But when the personnel committee gave me as the personnel chair to go ahead to call you when we needed you, I don't know if I told you this, but I was physically shaking that day. I wasn't sure what you were going to say. And when you said yes, you probably remember this, I think I squeaked.
That's true.
Because I just knew in my heart that you were what we needed. And from that moment on, I have been calm and steady and ready to keep doing the work that we needed to do. So I am so grateful to you.
Yeah, what can you say? I mean.
That's a doubt.
Some bad times, and it got worse there. Would you kind of level the ship a little bit when we needed it most? So I want to say thank you, and thank you to your wife too for keeping us the opportunity to have you back.
I want to say thank you, John. What you provided during this short period of time has been very valuable. I feel as though we as board members have learned a lot from you in four months, and we probably learned in our time of being on the board. So thank you for that. And please thank your wife, Marley, for being with us.
Scott stole my legend line that I used when, when you agreed to come back. So all I can think of is, you know, Tony and I were in a clear and tight spot. All I can think of is the old Texas Ranger saying, one riot, one ranger. You rode in and really took care of this town, helped settle us all down, got a lot of things done, got a remarkable amount of things done, made some tough decisions, and have been great for all of us, as Angela said. We're more working with you in a few months than previous five and a half years as a board. So just can't thank you and your family enough for sharing the praise.
Well, let me just make a couple of quick comments. And first of all, thank you very much. That's very humbling. The reality is, is that there are a lot of really good people working in this district that are doing the work. And they've done good work. And yes, there are some definite issues that have to, that have to be dealt with. I think you as a board have, were very clear when I first got here about what, some of the things that you needed. And I've tried to live up to providing that with you. And I would encourage you to, to continue to grow and to understand all of the workings in the district so that when you're making decisions, your superintendent can bring to you good information. You can get it ahead of time. You can think about it and then apply that and ask questions for whatever decisions you make. Because you've got some tough decisions, but there's also a lot of good people here. Gary has asked me to, to visit with each of the buildings, and I continue to marvel at the number of good people that you have working for you, both out in the buildings and in the district office. And I could go through and list all kinds of people that are, that are quality people and doing good work here. And what you need to do is provide them policy and direction so that they can do their good work. And to challenge them with being able to explain things and why they do things a certain way, and to listen to their recommendations, but then to think about what you've been educated on and then, and then make the best decision for the community. Cindy and I agreed to do this because of the community and the staff here and how great we were treated during the years that we worked here and then even after we lived here for a while after I quit. This is repetitious for some people, but Cindy and I always talked about in the 29, 30 years that I did this, that when I retired, we were going to move. The reality was, is that I didn't have to move right away. I went and, and worked at someplace else for a few months, which gave me a bit of a separation. And I wasn't looked at as the, the guy that's looking over the next person's shoulder, that type of thing. And we stayed here because we really appreciated the people in the community and the community. There will always be a very warm place in our heart for that. And I do appreciate Cindy and what this has meant because we, we've, she's given up. I, I've actually enjoyed most of my time here. I'm not going to say all. But it's been, it's been great to reconnect with people and meet the new people that are now working here on your behalf. But Cindy's probably given up more than I have. But the day that we were walking out after talking to Sean about doing this, or I think even she intimated to me when Sean couldn't even hear maybe, that I needed to do this if there was anything I could do to put something back to help the community and the school district. We do care about, we do care about everybody, and I care about all the people doing the good work in the district. And you just need to, to foster that good work. And all I had to do was come in and encourage people to do good things and to support them as they were doing it. The work that I may sit, have the opportunity to sit and present to you is work that other people have done. I just happen to be the fortunate one that is able to come and explain some things to you. So I appreciate all the comments. I wish I actually felt I could have lived up to all of those. But my heart really is very appreciative of the kind comments and the other comments that I received. And I wish you nothing but the best. So thank you.
All right. Another certificate suitable for framing. This says, in recognition of excellence, but in addition, thank you for service, for serving our students and community as acting, temporary acting interim superintendent. All right. And do you want to introduce what happens after the ceremony?
I don't know if I get two words out though, following him.
Take your time.
My daughter Jenna made you some gluten-free cupcakes as your recognition.
Go ahead, do that.
We'll enjoy that after.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to official 7.2 approval of the SEA teacher contract. So let's bring up Dale and Natasha. Come on up. Thanks for being here.
Want to introduce Natasha Halseth, who's relatively new. She's a human resources generalist here for us. I have to make sure I get your title right too. And she's been doing just a knockout job for us.
Thank you. On the behalf of Keith Ray, who was unable to attend tonight, I just wanted to give a brief summary of the highlights of going through the negotiation process with SHOC Education Association, the difficulties and obstacles that I think both teams were faced with this contract settlement. I personally haven't seen in my experience the level of collaboration and partnership through those obstacles in difficult situations. There is a level of problem solving, understanding mutual needs and wants, but just trying to find a way to work through those problems to find a mutually agreeable solution. So it was a, on a personal note, it was really refreshing, an opportunity for me to be a part of and see the collaboration with both parties, the personnel committee, the management, and the members of the committee.
I just have several things I'd like to say. First of all, I just really want to give my appreciation to the members of the board who sat on the negotiations committee, to Gary as well and to John McBrum. We, as a teachers group, have really appreciated the district's willingness to participate in interest-based bargaining and to use a very collaborative and mutual problem-solving approach to negotiations. Obviously, both sides were confronted with really challenging situation in this particular round of negotiations. And as a negotiations group, our goal was really to try and find, I think, a collective goal was to, to find a way to kind of split the difference between creating additional financial challenges for the district and also trying to keep teachers from going backwards financially, trying to find that middle ground that, that helped us to continue moving forward in a way that doesn't put the district at more risk and, or teachers at more risk either. And so I'm just really appreciative of that. Obviously, we believe as a teacher group that our economic situation is tied to the district's economic situation. We recognize that. And so we have worked in good faith and we spent a significant amount of time on our side of the table to work with teachers, to help teachers understand why in this particular situation, we needed to, to do things in a, in a very, very collaborative manner. And so through that whole process, we, just to really, I just really want to say a thank you to each of you for your participation in that process. It wasn't necessarily easy the whole, the whole way through. There's always ups and downs as you go through something as challenging as this. But the board taking the time to, to listen to teachers through the task force for the high school schedule and some of the different, you know, things that were, were put into this contract settlement as recognition in terms of understanding that we couldn't maybe get us a, a market value compared to, to comparative districts, you know, settlement. There was an understanding from the district that we needed to do some things to try and make things more flexible and accommodating for teachers as well. So we're very, very, very appreciative. So Mr. McKean, Mr. Pass, and Ms. Howe, we're very thankful for your efforts there. I also would be remiss if I didn't also acknowledge John McBrum and, and his role stepping in. I think one of the things that made this even more challenging than, than most rounds of negotiation were just the, again, I think over the course of this negotiation period, beginning in May, we, we had four different superintendent peoples, you know, leaders who played that role. Rod Thompson and then Birkin as the very interim person and, and then Superintendent Anger. And then when he went on leave, John McBrum stepped in. And I, again, just a super thank to you to the board for selecting John McBrum. He is somebody, somebody who has absolute trust from the teachers who know him, who were here when he was, was here before, and who respect him as, as someone who, A, is physically savvy, B, who really, really truly cares about people, and who demonstrates sacrificial leadership. And I want to just say that as a, as a person who strives to be a leader of integrity, he is one of my role models. And so to have him be there at the table is, was something that really allowed this process to move forward very effectively. So I appreciate your taking the time to, to bring him into the process and his willingness to step back into the fray and, and to be willing to work through what I'm sure from his perspective was a, was a very challenging thing as well. So with all that said, just again, really thank you for your, for your time and your investment in this process.
I'll also comment just very briefly. I've, I've been involved with teacher negotiations in five different school districts. I've never worked with a teachers association that has a better viewpoint of the big picture than the SEA. They're, they did not negotiate with a me-first attitude. It was truly about the best interests of both sides, and most importantly, our students and this community. So I really have to give huge thanks to Dale, his entire teacher team, and everybody that was involved with negotiations. It was an amazing process to be a part of.
So just so the public knows, the board has received the highlights of the tentative agreement. We got those for a number of weeks, and we also have a chance to review the redline version of the contract. So we have our fully informed at this point. And we do have a recommended action on the table led us to approve the 2017-19 Shakopee Education Association Collective Bargaining Agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second, Sean. Any further discussion?
I just want to say thank you to the board member who sat and worked on that. I know you guys have been in a lot of hours thanking you for all your work.
Yes.
Yeah, I would like to say it was my third round. I'm an HR guy, I trade, so I think I'll be on this committee probably as long as I'm on the board. But it truly, as everybody said, it was a group of people all the way around the table who cared most about kids, and equality of teaching was the North Star absolutely throughout the whole process. As Dale mentioned, there's always things to negotiate and things to partner on and collaborate above. But it's, once again, a phenomenal process, and I can't say enough of the good things about everything, from Dale's leadership, Gary's leadership, and John's leadership. It was a fascinating process, and I'm glad that we're here and ready to move forward. And I think we'll probably start it again in about a year.
What do you think, Dale?
Start next time.
All right. Yeah, I would say this agreement is a testament to the character of the folks that worked hard, a lot of hours. Be fun to see how many hours we added them all up. Maybe you don't want to know that.
No, we don't want to know.
You don't want to know that. Excellent work. Okay. Any further discussion? If there are none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. That motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. John McBrum, come back up again. 7.3, approval of 2017-18 revised budget.
And I'll just chime in while John's coming up. I want to remind the public that we've provided a link on our website to allow for public input on budget adjustments as we go through the process this spring. And I can say that I personally read every single comment and suggestion that has come in and replied to every single person that has provided input to us. So I want to thank them for that, and there's some great ideas out there from our public. We're doing the same internally. John's visiting all our buildings. We met with our principals today. And I want to give a huge shout out to Tyler. He's been just doing yeoman's work with us without a finance director right now and stepping up and just spending countless hours. He's getting asks from two superintendents at the same time, and he's been able to answer every question we've had and then some. So a huge shout out to Tyler.
Well, let me just make a couple of quick comments. This is the same budget that you got a chance to look at at your work session. I refer to my point about, I think it's appropriate to get information into your hands, give you a chance to digest it, ask questions, do that type of thing, and then come back to get an approval. We've only made a couple of minor adjustments to what you saw a couple of weeks ago. The first one has to do with the operating capital item of $138,644. We have moved that over to the restricted area mainly to keep it as a placeholder. If it's not put into the restricted area, what happens is you can kind of lose sight of that and spend it on something else. And then if you've got a capital expenditure which is some of a bigger project, something with a building, could be a large curriculum purchase, that type of thing, by restricting it. And I really prefer to say that it's a sign because you could still use that in another way, but I think it's very important to keep that. So we moved that out. It shows that we're really forecasting a better finish, a more of a balanced situation rather than what I thought originally could happen with another situation where we had more expenditures than revenues to start in when I first got here. Now, let me just make a couple of points about that. A lot of credit goes to Tyler, who works in our finance department and is very capable of providing quality service to you, and you're going to want to take advantage of his expertise and his experience in the district. Suzanne did yeoman's work, too, with the revised budget, and I want to thank her for her time, too. And what we're trying to do over the time of the last three, four months was to validate all of the different things that were in this budget, so that when we offered you a revised budget, it would be things that we really believed could happen and is where we believe you're going to, you're headed. I talked a lot about your decline in fund balance and how you need to look at your pattern of your fund balance, and your pattern has been down, and I was very blunt about that. But I believe that through figuring out what's reality, looking at people doing some good work, helping us to check things out and to confirm things, we're able to offer you basically a flat budget. Now, I would be remiss if I didn't say you're half a percent off, you're $450,000 one way or the other. But I'm feeling pretty good about the fact that I think this could be the worst-case scenario. We've got some contingency money in there for things that are unexpected. We all should be doing that in our own personal finance, having, you know, prepared for something that comes up that was unexpected. There is a little bit of money in here for that, but I believe that this is a good representation of where I believe the district will be at the end, and that's why Gary is recommending to you this change. I want to point out that give special... I've already commented very possibly about Tyler, but I want to make sure that you understand that as your new, hopefully a new finance director is on board pretty soon, you've got somebody here that actually, in a few minutes, you'll be talking about some additional dollars and asking you to support a change in one of our, what I'm going to call, applications to the state for additional funding on your integration, your achievement and integration area. That's right out of what Tyler found for us, and he's the one that put together the adjusted things to go to the state so that we qualify for that additional money. And I'm singling him out, but there's a lot of really good people in your finance department. And as I said earlier, you want to make sure that you're listening, that they get to, they give you information, but you need to also be questioning them to make sure that in your mind you know exactly what you want. Gary has experience of dealing with tough financial situations. We're not out of the woods yet for next year, but there needs to be some work done. But you've got good people in Gary and Tyler and the other people in the finance deal that can help you with that. So we stand for any questions? The fund balance, really, the total fund balance in the general fund has really not changed from what we showed you two weeks ago. It's just that we tweaked a couple of things to, I think, make sure that they didn't get lost. You know, as you go forward, you know where that money originally was intended to do. And it doesn't mean you can't move it, but we want you to be as educated as we can about the things. So we'll stand for any questions, and I may have to defer to Tyler because he's the one that's done a lot of this work. If you don't have any, then what I would do is turn it over to Superintendent Anger to make the recommendation on this, and then you're going to want Tyler and others to be providing you with, if not monthly, updates every couple of months, and for the finance committee to be following this to make sure that we know the plan that we have offered you. And that's what a budget is, is the plan, that we are, we're following that. And you've got to remember that this is the basis for what you're going to have to pass in June for your budget for next year. So this is just a starting point. This isn't the end, Ollie. There's work to be done.
That's recommend, Chair Swanson.
Okay. Action on the table is to approve the 2017-2018 revised budget as presented. Thanks, gentlemen. Angela and Bass, further discussion? I feel like saying thank you again to Shallow because we've said it so many times, but I don't think these numbers have been touched more in their life. I feel very good about what we are approving, more so than I think I ever have.
And thank you, Tyler, as well. I don't know if we acknowledged as much as we probably should, but thank you so much.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. That motion carries. All right. A, come on up. We do have under 7.4, 7.5, 7.6, and 7.7, a number of change orders that originally could have been on consent, but there's some, some of these change orders have been actually in the works for quite a while, and there's quite the pile of documentation to go with it. All right. We thought it would best at BAC that we just had A come, give us a quick update quota-wise on what's going on with the high school expansion, and then just cover these individual change orders one at a time and be able to answer any questions publicly that anybody may have. So as far as I'm concerned, unless there's any objection, do we really need to take these approvals one at a time, or can we do them all en masse?
I actually would like them separated.
Yes, ma'am. Then we'll do them one at a time. You want to hit the update first, or you want to start directly with the change order?
We can start with the change orders first.
Do it.
All right. So change order number 14, this is for the high school. I guess there are some offsetting costs here. So the biggest one that I want to bring your attention to is we added, what, $150,000 worth of work for the broadcasting and photography remodel. So that was a big-ticket item on there, but then that got offset with us omitting some of these screens for the HVAC units on top of the high school. So that's why that number is down to $29,000. So those are the main big-ticket items for this particular change order.
So just for those that don't have the ability to look at this, change order 14, the overall changes add or subtract what?
Twenty-nine... Nineteen... Nineteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars.
There's a lot of line items on here for a $19,000 change. I just want to call that out. And then could you just give us a heads up as to why some of these things take so long?
In regards to getting the paperwork done or the approval? Both the approval process. So we've got an executed change order that takes signatures from both the contractor and then the architect, and then the district is allowed to sign off on these change orders.
Okay. Any questions on change order 14?
No, but I want to make a comment. This is, you know, ICS involved for that matter, but this is why we had you guys in place, because the screens, if I'm not mistaken, that was something you guys really kind of discovered.
Yeah.
Value engineering. We didn't really need those, and that ended up saving us to the tune of a buck fifty, whatever it was. It was significant.
Sixty-five.
Eight hundred sixty-six thousand. That's exactly why we had you in place. You're working on our behalf, and we appreciate that. That enables us to reallocate those dollars for the things. So to you a... We say this at the BAC meetings, but these folks aren't at the BAC meetings. Thank you, and thanks to the whole team. And that's going to be replicated through several of these, but just wanted to make a comment now.
Agreed. All right. I'd like to entertain a motion then to approve change order 14 as presented.
I'll make it.
Reg?
Second.
Second, Matt. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. All right. 7.5, change order 15.
Change order 15. So this one is for the amount of $116,986, sixty-eight cents to be exact. So the big-ticket item on this change order for the amount of $49,000. So if you recall, way back when we did the privacy locker rooms, we had PR number three, which is change order number three. We had about $250,000 worth of work that was budgeted for the locker rooms. And so when we scrutinize these changes, we're going to make sure that they're market value, that line item by line item, everything is approved. So in the work, we approved everything with exception to the tile work because we debated some of the takeoffs in the square footages. So that's why this took so long to get approved. So this is just part of that privacy locker room. So we only approved about 190K of the 250, so this is the $49,000 of the tile.
Okay. So let me reiterate that. This add...
For $49,000.
For $49,000 is not something we chose to add last week.
No, no. This was dating back to the privacy locker. So again, we're...
Right. I remember that change order when we decided to do it, but at that time you only used 190 of the order.
We only approved one item.
This is the remainder.
This is the remainder.
Correct. The reason I'm asking, and maybe I'll just ask this now, is that I've had some people express some concerns with change orders and saying that we should halt all change orders on the project. Can you just quickly explain, like, there are 20 lines on this change order. Can you explain what change orders are and how they're an integral part of any building project?
And industry standards, so for any project, you have about 3% to 5% contingency for these types of occurrences, whether it's scope changes, whether it's coordination, whether it's added value in regards to code review, things that you guys need to add, or changes like the photography broadcasting booths, or those are things that you guys have modified and changed. So those are the types of things that these changes are for. Otherwise, it's coordination, and in a code review, let's say, when you're doing a project, you're designing two to three years prior to it actually being implemented. Codes change, things change in regards to that aspect as well. So those are things that we choose this contingency to run for.
It's all part of the budget. Building into the original budget, draw down against that as these things arise.
Exactly.
We'll talk about the summary at the end.
Okay. Yeah, maybe hold on, but give us an update maybe before you head out on where we're at contingency wise. Okay. Any other notable items here in number 15? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve change order... Tony and Matt.
Wait, sorry. Tony and Matt.
Tony and Matt. Any additional comments and discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Change order is approved. Move on to 7.6, change order 16.
All right. Change order 16, even though it looks like a daunting number for 400,000 to 6,000, this actually is a change order but is not drawing from contingency. This is actually part of the project. So when we originally designed the work, we had an alternate in the bidding process to have this central kitchen. After we had numerous conversations with our food service consultant, we scaled back what was required, and we were actually were getting or doing or implementing some of the healthy food options with them. So we understood that. So now this is the redesign, scaling back on what is actually required for more freezer and cooler space. So the original alternate was like 3.8, we scaled it back to 1.3, and now this is the new design, which is again, just adding, not adding any space, but modifying existing cooler and freezer space.
Questions on 16?
Yeah. So I was on back two years ago when we were talking about the kitchen redesign, and I remember initially the number was something like 2 million that we were budgeting for the redesign.
1.8.
Yeah, 1.8. And so this is now the actual number. So this was built into the project, but this is the actual number, 1.8, that we're spending to redesign.
Correct.
Yeah, so I will come back two years ago when we were talking about the kitchen redesign. And I remember initially the number was something like 2 million that we were budgeting for the redesign. Yeah, 1.8. And so this is now the actual number. So this was built into the project, but this is the actual number, 1.8, that we're spending to redesign.
Correct.
Okay, so it's a net.
For this particular component.
For this component.
That one's for the kitchen.
Okay.
This is the big chunk.
Any other questions? I entertain a motion to approve. Matt and Reg, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Change order 16 is approved. We move to 7.7, change order number eight, this is a closing out bond?
Yep, this is closing out bond, so this is the very last change order for bond, which is a credit of $43,047.27. So a lot of these items are deductions in regards to some of the grass work, the sod work that we felt weren't up to the standards. So we said, well, we'll take care of ourselves, and that's the number that we decided to either just take on, and have Kane do himself, or just let it ride and see how the grass grows in for this upcoming spring.
So this is done, bond is done?
Bond is done.
So aside as if we're leaving things undone, we're just going to assume responsibility as a district?
Yep.
That's great.
Any other questions? Your mom looks awesome. Thanks.
It does, thank you.
All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve change order number eight.
Hold on a second.
Angela and Sean, any further discussion? Any none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Bond is closed. All right, let's get an update on...
Let's do a quick update as well?
Yes, please.
All right, so this is our shot of the east main entrance. So I think last time I showed you this, we didn't have any of the windows up. So the biggest thing here is you've got all the glass windows for our studio stage and for our flex labs and science areas too. On the lower level, you've got all the CME walls that are done for our science rooms. Right now, all the MEPs, so mechanical, electrical, and plumbing is also complete downstairs. Currently working on framing the subwalls and sockets in the corridor spaces. And this week they'll work on painting some of those walls. And on second level, if you look on the brick side, second level, you've got the framing of the broadcast and the photography spaces being put up right now, and then there are continuing mechanical, electrical, and plumbing as well.
And that's the arts and communication?
This is the arts and communication. This is on the northeast corner. Here's our shot again of the northeast corner from the entrance. So this, again, the arts and communication wing. You can see some of the rough ins for the curtain walls. We've got a lot of windows on this side of the school. So we've got the 2D and 3D art rooms on the floor level, and then the upper levels are some flexible lattice spaces. So on this, on the exterior work, all the roofing is complete. And then next week, we'll start putting up some night glass on the glazing for the classrooms there. You probably can't see it, but on the east stair tower, that has actually been put in as well. I think I put in this past week. This is a shot come near the main entrance, so this is just south of the new thrust auditorium, leading you into the east entrance and the studio stage as well. So right now, the exterior wall, you see that radius wall, that brick is complete on the outside. Right now, they're installing the precast sill. And then in about two weeks, they'll start putting up that curtain wall that you see on the right of the image there. And then once the curtain wall's in, they'll start pouring the floor, the concrete floor.
I guess I'm a little surprised. I was thinking, based upon my last BAC meeting, because I missed the last one, the floor's not in. Is that, that timing is still fine?
Yeah.
It's at theaters now.
No, I know, I'm talking about here. Yes, I knew that.
We've got to get enclosed first before you want to get the flooring. Here's a shot looking into the studio space. Pretty hard to tell by this picture, but the painting is pretty much complete, so you can get all the windows are also in. All the mechanical duct work, hydraulic piping is complete in this space. Wall framing is complete, so next, what we're waiting on is the final wall covering. It needs to be installed next week, and then the grid tension for the ceiling will be installed in a couple of weeks as well.
Out of curiosity, the wall covering, is it the same covering that the hole, or if I have a better term, in the comments area that's cut through up to the second floor? Remember there was that issue with the paneling sticking? It was an adhesive problem? Is it the same stuff?
No, this is actually different. This is anomaly. And this is just strips of wall coverings, because part of it's painted, part of it's wall covering. Here's your shot looking into the auditorium, so I don't remember last time. But we've got all the floors poured, the control room on the right hand, the walls are up, ceiling and floors for the control room as well. Right now, they're just finishing up the duct work, finishing up fire sprinkling piping and electrical work. And probably in late March is when they'll start painting in the space. And then behind the stage, you've got all the walls up for like the uniform storage, piano storage, and so forth. This is a shot, so on the left-hand side, you kind of see the old entrance to the existing auditorium. And then to the right is your entrance to the new arts and communication. And then to the right of that would be your new thrust auditorium.
So this almost used to be the exterior?
Yeah, sorry, remember that estuary, that estuary that got you under?
Yeah, that's that.
And you can see in the photographic ports on the floor. So on the left-hand side there, there'll be some restrooms, and on the right-hand side, there'll be some additional restrooms for auditorium guests. So the remainder of work of this week will be pouring the remainder of that floor. And this is a shot of our south tower. The biggest progress here is you can see on the, what we call the eyebrow, that canopy. You've got all that metal paneling that's complete on the east side, and other, look their way here on the west side. And then the stairwell is already in place, and they've pretty much finished that up with exception to sealing the floor. And this shot is of the third level of your south tower. So this is looking back at the existing building. You can see that some of the wall tile has started, and the painting is pretty much complete. And then they'll finish up with some ceiling grid work. So this is your resource area outside of the classrooms. And this is on the second level of your south tower, so this is the computer lab. So all the ceiling grid is in, lights are in, mechanical and electrical is in. The only thing left in here to do is finish up the padding of the ceiling and then the flooring next week. And the last shot is of the new east tower.
Take a back. Maybe I'm just not seeing it, or maybe that's actually what that is. Are those electrical?
Floor boxes?
Yeah, I think in this room you have some, and I thought those were water drops or something, but okay.
Yep, those are floor boxes. And then the last slide is our new east tower, which is also our new administration areas. So the glazing is complete on the south side there. Currently, they're working on the curtain wall for the stairs on the north side. The roofing is complete on here, so they're waiting for the temperatures to warm up, so then they can start putting the weather barriers on where all that green is on the exterior, to put that up when it starts to warm up here. And then in late March, they'll start putting up the metal panel on those eyebrows as well. On the first level of this, like you've just called us, this is your new administration area. So right now, they've got all the walls up on the first level. Second level, they've got probably 50% of the walls up, and then all the MEP work that's going on in all these spaces. But we're hoping to turn over the administration space for March, in March, so we can get ahead of the game, so we can start some of the remodel work inside.
Can you help me remember, is there going to be any remodeling of the current administrative space?
Yes, so that's going to be the freshman academy.
Where the current principal's office?
Where the current, yeah, exactly.
It'll be part of the, well, that'll all happen in the summer?
Yep, that's all summer work. And that's the whole point, we're trying to, it's kind of a domino effect. You've got to remove the existing administration space and their new space, and then once they're in there, then we can get out. So a lot of interior work over the summer.
Are we on time?
Yes.
It's so hard to believe, like, I walk in that building almost every morning, and I'm like, how are they going to complete this in six months? But you will.
Yeah.
And could you just, since we teased it out, contingency, where are we submitting budget?
Yeah, so approved, approved change orders, today we have about 1.3 in approved change orders. And so if you think about that in regards to contingency, it's a $74 million budget. That's only about 1.7% of your contract value. So with that being said, with our pending risk and everything, because we've got about $600,000 with a pending risk, so we're at about $600,000.
And that's after the $2 million that was reallocated back to the other budgets. So the project is, you could arguably say, at this point, is other budgets.
It's other budget.
And we understand we're not done yet.
We're not done yet.
Contingency is in place, but we're very pleased with where we stand and have been standing, been on time, under budget consistently, and remain.
Like, the biggest percentage, like I mentioned, was here, 1.8%, 1.7%, industry standards at 3% to 5% contingency, so.
We appreciate your work on our task.
Our experience with communication's been excellent this year. We've known everything, every step of the way.
Thank you.
All right, John, if you would entertain this just maybe once more for the approval of the facility fee schedule?
And I'll just, as John's walking up, I'll just mention that this has been vetted through CPAC, and we were provided some feedback from CPAC. And the one thing you'll see in category two on the first page is that it's settled on a percentage of 50% there. That was blank before, and then the 75% for, you can read it there, religious organizations' rental rates, so.
I don't, I don't think there's a whole lot more to discuss. You had a chance to see this, we made some adjustments. Excuse me, pardon me. There is one typo, and that's on me, I didn't, I didn't catch it. And it's on the next page where it talks about the different individual fees. And there's a fee there for game fields above the turf and that type of thing, and that's just grass game fields. And I had suggested at our last meeting that we change that to be that a fee for half a day, or a day, rather than trying to do it by the hour, because those outdoor deals are not, I mean, it just wasn't appropriate. It was a, it was a poor choice to put that. And so I'm suggesting that you, I'm recommending that you pass this with that adjustment, understanding that this is a working document. I think Gary's comments at the last meeting were very appropriate, that just like anything else, there's some things that you have to try on and see how they work and make adjustments. But I think this is a good beginning point for your new facilities with that change along with the percentages. And then look at your people who will be actually managing or administering these things to be able to come back to you at a future point and say, this could be tweaked a little bit, and go from there. So unless there's questions, again, you've seen this, it's an opportunity for you to weigh in with any last questions. Otherwise, I'm sure Gary's recommendations can pass with this adjustment.
All right. As said, the recommended action is to approve the facility fee schedule as presented with the clarification of what the playing fields. Any further discussion?
A question for Gary, or maybe even Ashley, what's our plan to communicate this, posting it where it will be accessible as PBOs, they need to read this.
Good question.
Maybe we don't know the answer yet, but obviously we'll need to figure that out.
I'm not sure, but we will figure it out.
Yeah, we haven't talked about that yet.
As far as posting it, but we can communicate information.
Right.
I assume it'd be somewhere near the facility scheduling opportunity where you request, you're going to want that easily accessible? Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. All right, 7.9, Gary?
Tyler, come on up.
Achievement Integration Budget.
Since you are detective here, and I'll just, go ahead Tyler, and then I'll just chime in.
Back in the mic.
So in about this time last year, we approved the budgets for 17, 18. MDE came back and said that there were problems with the budget that we submitted. Those were not communicated to finance, myself, who did the first one. And there were changes made that basically we weren't using the appropriate amount of money. So we weren't going, MDE was not going to send us that revenue. So we have to revise the budget, and we submitted to MDE to tap into those funds that we are entitled to, I guess. So the changes between the original, the original that was revised and the one that we're going to revise again, it's a lot of just moving between buckets, basically, to get the appropriate funds.
So in a nutshell, to summarize, we were not accessing almost $43,000 of funds that we should have, we were allocated. We were due, and so Tyler caused that mistake, and we revised the budget so that we can now access those funds.
And this is now obviously in the form and structure that the MDE approves?
Correct, but we need your approval before we can submit it.
And then we will be back to the table here again in June to do meetings?
It's earlier than that, or be, oh, actually, the board doesn't need to approve these anymore.
Oh, well?
Yeah, but we'll be presenting it to you, and it'll be a lot earlier, and trust me, we'll access every penny available.
All right, wonderful. In that case, the recommended action is to go ahead and approve the revised 2017-2018 Achievement Integration Budget Workbook. Sean? And Tony, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, and that motion carries. That's a lot of stuff. Okay, let's move on to item eight, and there are no new business discussion items. So we'll go into nine, and that is new business action items. So 9.1 is to address the school board vacancy. At our retreat, we had the opportunity as a board to talk about some of the options that are available to us as far as going ahead and replacing Mary Romanski. And just kind of want to reiterate what those options are for the public, and that is that we have the opportunity to choose one of three actions. One is to do nothing, which I think we as a board have agreed is not an action we're looking to take. Second opportunity is to go ahead and appoint an individual, to simply name someone. The third opportunity is to go through an application process and appoint through that. And at our retreat, we discussed all options, and we agreed at that time, which we're going to, you know, go ahead and discuss here at the table. There certainly seemed to be energy behind taking option number three, which is going ahead with an application process, and we had to fill, backfill Mary's spot in that way. So at that, at this point, I just kind of want to open up and see if there's any opinions or comments that anybody wants to make with respect to that conversation at retreat.
I think we all agree that this is the, probably the most equitable and... I don't know the right word, way to move forward in order to allow our entire community to choose, to throw their name in the hat. One thing that we talked about that was a challenge is that we are, we realize that we're now coming up on March 1st. This appointment is only until essentially January 1st. So we do realize that going through this process will require a little bit more time, but we also want to make it more available and accessible to our entire community.
Yeah, I can speak a little bit to the timetable. Yeah, I can speak a little bit to the timetable that we'd be looking at. Obviously, tonight, we'll have to go ahead and agree on what action via a vote. We'd be looking at accepting applications between March 1st and March 23rd, that's right before spring break cutoff. We'd be looking to reconvene as a board and screen, review, and interview those interested candidates in early April, and we would look to bring back to the board and take official action on April 23rd. That's the next, that would be the next board business meeting in April. At that point, if we go ahead and approve that, that appointment, the 30-day clock would start.
You can make a recommendation at that meeting, and then there's a 30-day period in which the public can provide input and/or petition the placement, and then after that 30-day period is when you can take official action.
Yeah, so based on that timetable, that would put us, you know, into May, early June, as far as actually having action taken and having a new board member seated. We're recognizing, as Sean mentioned, and that, you know, individual would be, may or may not be interested in actually running for a seat in the fall. So that is what we're proposing right now. Any additional discussion or questions about this process?
Wait, did you say the questions would be about early?
March 1st, we'd like to have the application process available March 1st, and that'd be published on our district's website. This is something where, you know, that has been done in the past, so. March 1st to March 23rd is the timeline. Anything else? All right, hearing nothing, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the facilitation, or the, to facilitate the replacement process for the school board vacancy. Angela, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Go the same sign, that motion carries. Thank you for that. And then we'll move on to 9.2, Special Education Funding Resolution. Angela Tupper will take this one.
All right, the, I believe the Minnesota School Board Association is working with legislature, legislative people to get special education funding funded. And there are, there were some resolutions that went out to the different districts in Minnesota, and it's basically just to show support for, for them to go ahead and work on getting the special education services fully funded. So I asked if we could have this on the agenda, and if we could be one of those districts that would support this. I see this as a Minnesota, only up on our board is the Minnesota one, there is a federal one as well, so maybe we should do that one at another time, so that you guys can review that. But my recommendation is that we would approve this for the special education.
And it's fair to say that this is a non-binding action, this is just more fitting our voices on the record of support as opposed to.
We're asking both state and federal governments to fund it at a level they did the funding at the time.
Correct, correct.
So we have to make up the difference.
Yeah, we're just asking them to do what they said they need.
Yep.
That would probably be the 145th, 156th district, double 337th, so hopefully we have a majority.
So I'm just asking my fellow friends to approve this.
Are you making any more?
Yes.
We do have a recommended action there, do we need to go ahead and read that verbatim, or can we just go ahead with it?
I would read it.
Read the, the action itself, not the document?
The, the recommended action.
Okay, I'll read the recommended action. All right, now therefore, be it resolved that Shakopee Public Schools urged the governor and legislator to strenuously advocate for significant increases in federal special education funding and meaningful special education reforms at the federal and state levels. And now therefore, be it resolved that there is an urgency, that there is an urgency in Minnesota Legislature to convene a task to work on special education funding, specifically with a focus on the impacts of the new special education funding formulas, the projected cross subsidy and recommendations with a timeline to eliminate the cross subsidy as presented.
I would like to make that motion.
Okay.
However, can I just point one thing out?
Sure.
This does say federal and state, what you read?
Yeah.
And you're only seeing the state version in your board book, so how you wanna proceed with that?
I assume, since I didn't see the federal, that that whole second section refers exclusively to the federal? No, it doesn't. You know what, I think maybe, since this is a non-binding, can we get the language cleaned up, and then we can just bring it back? Or are we okay?
You're actually proving this resolution, this resolution.
But I mean, the language for our, the actual recommended action. Sure, but this is inaccurate, so I can't, we can't use this as it is.
Just a summary, I don't think that.
That's not, okay, then in the record, you will, we'll have to correct the record to reflect what we're actually doing. That make sense? Okay.
The state version.
Yes, let's leave the state version.
Yes.
All right, what she said. You ready to make that motion?
Yes.
Second, Matt, any additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Go the same sign, motion carries. Okay. All right, moving on to item number 10, other, and we had no other, unless you have another?
Nope.
All right. Number 11, committee reports. It's going on the horn here, board members, Matt, any committee reports? No, just, Angela?
I'm just gonna mention that the Southwest Metro Board also approved that resolution as well at our festival.
This weekend, I did not attend the Daddy Daughter Dance, which was community activity again, and they keep selling out in record time every year. And I heard apparently there was a black market, wasn't there, somebody trying to sell tickets for more money?
Yeah.
Who would do that?
Somebody was trying to buy them at an elevated price, they were offering more money online for somebody to give up their tickets.
So I'm good again.
Anyone else?
Nope.
We already had the finance committee sort of update, so I won't, I'll let that go.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
We'll circle back to the.
I'm the co-.
Okay, can I do committee and happy?
Sure, go ahead. I was gonna do that later, but you go ahead.
Oh, no, 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 wait.
All right.
Okay, committee reports, I just wanted to let you know that our Citizens Communication Advisory Committee has met several times, we most recently met last week, and it's a really, it's incredible committee. We have one of our members in the audience tonight, and.
Two.
Oh, we do, yes, two. Two, sorry, Dale. Well, Ashley, she has the call. And I want the public to know that some of the recommendations that have come out of this committee have actually already been implemented. For instance, the Did You Knows that came out of the committee. Information that we can get out to the public about our, what we're doing, the things we're doing well, things we need to gain feedback on, a lot of that work is coming out of the committee, and I think they're doing a fabulous job. And I would also like to say thank you to our communications team, they work really, really hard, and they're doing a very good job.
Policy committee met us tonight. You guys know keenly from the past year-plus, we've been going through the various series of the NSBA policies. 600 was the only one we had not gotten to, 600 started immediately on all the curriculum and teaching level activities. We're very fortunate that Ed Cox has volunteered to work with the policy committee, really worked with board, worked with the policy committee on that first draft, so we're starting to develop a timeline for that. As you know, policies are constantly subject to revision, whether it's by the state or NSBA, or just the landscape changes, so we have some additional policies that Gary's brought up, that we're gonna be looking at, that we will bring back to the board, but that ever-exciting policy topic, which I do happen to like, Mary and I were two that really liked that. So we will be coming back to the board with recommended updates to a couple of individual policies, probably fairly near term, and then the whole 600 series, we'll get more completely into it. But that will complete our run-through, right, Sarah, that'll complete our run-through of the whole series of the policies. But as you know, they've got some changes, so it's not like we're gonna resume going through by chunk, we'll just now have a complete set that's current, and we can update it episodically.
All right, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to item 12, any recognition of visitors to board meeting? Come on, please sign in, give the address, and then state your name first, please.
So, John? Superintendent, I'm David Chase, I live in Document Terrace, as everybody knows. So I've lived here 17 years, the first 30 years of my work life is all based in law enforcement, operations, management, planning, interoperability. It's been my plan that when I retire, I would take my retirement time, and, and give to the city and the county to work in our emergency operations center, because planning is what I do. But with the recent events that we've had, the shooting in Florida is, is the big emphasis, I thought that I would see if I could come involved first with the school. And as superintendent presented, one of the questions I would have asked was, when was our last assessment plan? When is the next time that we will have a review? When is the next time that we interoperate with our local agencies? Some of those are things that he had specifically addressed in a brief time tonight. So I came to find out, from me at the board, if I would like to become involved with the school district and get into assisting with planning operations and interoperability especially, where do I get started? Probably with the superintendent, if I can get some contact information after me, I would really enjoy to do that, because it's my community, it starts here.
So the answer would be yes.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you very much.
My card on me.
I'll get one.
Dale, any other visitors? Thank you, Mr. Chase.
Side note, the first three years I was here, I was the primary instructor for speeding enforcement for all local agencies. I trained the trainers here at the department, at the county, the city, Fire Lake, Chaska. So some of them will remember me.
Thank you.
Okay. Upcoming meetings and important dates speaks for itself on there, February 26th, I think we can check that box. We move into March 19th, finance committee, committee meeting, as well as a school board business meeting, and then Baca on the 21st. Before we adjourn, let's just go ahead and share any kinda good news items, I know Sean's got something she'd like to cover, I got one thing I wanna cover. But I'd actually like to start with our staff, if we can, can we start with maybe Ashley and Sarah, we'll just kinda cascade across the room?
Give me one second.
Okay.
Circle back around to me.
Circle back around, okay. Sarah, anything? All right, Jenny?
Can I just tell you something that's coming up?
Sure.
We are going to be holding a mock car crash at the high school on April 19th, so we're running it through SAD, is the organization that, you know, I'm the advisor for. And we have a speaker coming in, her name is Cara Filler, and we, she spoke maybe four or five years ago, and she has an amazing connection with the kids and a, and a very life-changing story that seems to connect. Mock crash will start at about 9:00 in the morning, we are already working with the city to have signs up, and I've talked, communications will be involved in making sure the community knows, so that when a helicopter lands and we have all the emergency vehicles, there isn't a panic. And, yeah, and the speaker will come at 10:00 and speak, and so we should be done by 11:00.
At the high school?
At the high school, yes.
Thanks for that. John, broom, anything, any final comments? No? Ted?
TNL front, a little bit the high school too, I've talked to him in the past about we had the academy placement, feeling really solid about that and excited to move on to kinda what is the next concrete phase, as we look towards fall of 18. Every time we look off something, it kinda seems to make it more real, bringing people down a little bit in terms of their uncertainty. And then we start next week with our next round with industry council, so we'll have community and business leaders from the district will be in, working with our teachers as we develop, they'll work right down to the specific activity level, so it's a nice opportunity for us to say, you know, what is a really modern way to be looking at this? How do industry think about these different things that we are talking with our kids about in class? So that'll be a nice opportunity for the next couple of weeks.
Thanks, I'm gonna go back a second, confirm. Anything?
No.
Dale, anything?
The high school scheduled task force has its first meeting tomorrow.
Natasha? No? We'll go back to Ashley.
Okay, thank you. A lot of preparation has been underway to get students ready for the ACT, which is tomorrow. Dave, is Dave still here?
No.
No, he left. He led one of many, he led the first of many sessions to get students prepared, so good job to Dave and the rest of our teachers over at the high school. Also, on Thursday, I know Gary is going to this, Wrestlers going to state, they'll be over at the X. And we can, we have more information, we've been posting it on our social media sites, and it's also been posted on activities, so you can check that out. And also, for the past two months, and later in, what month are we in, anywhere, yeah? In March, we'll have another run of what we refer to as Teacher Tuesday, and that's just a way for us to recognize our teachers and what they're doing in the classrooms. So special thank you to all of our local businesses, who've been sponsoring gift cards that the teachers were not expecting at all, just as a way to show our appreciation to them, so thanks.
Thanks, thank you. Matt?
I was just recalling during, during the presentation about the facility, I had the opportunity to spend all weekend in Rochester at various venues for youth basketball, one of the few youth basketball tournaments I had in Norman, the superintendent, Mike Broome had. But it was, it was great to see and hear the parent feedback about how our athletic facilities compare favorably with some other high schools and colleges, and it was just fantastic to hear people were asking questions about renting the facilities, and it was great to hear that we now have a formally approved policy.
Kudos to our junior high East and West students and, and staff for putting on a fantastic production of Wizard of Oz, I got the chance to see it three times over the weekend, because I got students in there myself, I'm very proud of our students. I mean, I gotta admit, every time I attend one of our arts related, I mean, we've got great athletes, but we have incredibly talented artists in this, in this district, and appreciate the administration and parents that helped foster that great opportunity and give us a little bit of joy like we had over the weekend, so congratulations to that group.
Well, Ashley stole a little bit of my thunder, because I wanted to talk about this past week, our wrestlers who qualified for state. I'd also like to send some kudos to our swimmers, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Of 16 events, we will have swimmers in nine of them, which is unheard of. And so we are very, very excited and very proud of our, of both our wrestling team and our swim team, we have some incredible swimming athletes. I'd also like to say congratulations to Austin Kellogg, he is our national merit finalist this year, he's an incredible human being, and we're very, very lucky to have him here. And I will tell you, and I've talked to his parents extensively, he's, he's an exceptional individual, and they have been grilled with the quality of education that we have given to him, so very excited about that, congratulations to Austin.
All right, closing.
And I'll just close by saying, one of the best parts of being a superintendent is you get to go to these things and experience it. I was at the musical on Sunday, one thing we haven't mentioned is our high school choir performing at the MMBA event at the Minneapolis Convention Center on Friday. Only two schools will be, were invited, two school choirs were invited, and we were one of those two, and the performance was incredible. two, and the performance was incredible. I've also had the pleasure of attending all those sport events recently, and I've got my passes for the state wrestling tournament and state swim meet, and I don't know anything about swimming, but wrestling, I do know a little bit about, and so just, it's, it's an absolute honor to be a part of this community again, and to get to participate with all these things, and know that, you know, on my best days, I get to visit classrooms and kids, and so follow, follow us on Twitter, and you'll get to see all of those things in real time as, as we're experiencing them in such a great way.
One last thing, Ash, I think it'd be you, is there, did I hear there's a bus going down to wrestling on Thursday?
I'll have to check with activities.
Yeah, there are a couple fan buses going.
Okay, but is that just for, like, the kids, or is that also for adults that they want to ride if they can't get on?
Students, but parents can, parents can. Yep, it's just that, parents can if they're with a younger child, the younger kids have to be supervised if they want to ride the bus.
I just wondered if a senior citizen didn't want to drive down the road.
Yeah, you know, John Jenke set it up.
That's been allowed in the past, I don't know about this particular thing, but I know we had community people who didn't want to drive down the park, and they called the activities department, and they have figured out a way to...
To make it happen, yeah, so they can just contact John Jenke or the activities department, and we'll help out anybody get down there, but we also don't, we want all the kids to be safe right down there as well. And it's just for, wrestling is 9:00 in the morning, 1:00 in the afternoon, best-case scenario, 7:00 PM at night, so there's that big gap, so hopefully the bus, the bus is coming back after the 1:00 match to get kids back, and then people are responsible for their own thing at night.
So website only says that fan buses are available for adults and students in grades 10 through 12, it doesn't specify it's for adults, like, who don't have students per se, it's implied, but it doesn't specify.
Okay, so I would say, yeah, contact John Jenke if you have any questions.
Okay, anything else? That was a robust agenda.
One other thing.
What was it?
Yes, so we have a Destination Imagination program that we run through Community Ed. We have six teams this year, and five that were competitive level, so one was a preschool team that doesn't, they go to a competition and then they're done, and they competed this weekend, and four are going on to state, so...
Great. Hold on, March, some of these kids...
I think, yeah, I think we have more certificates coming. Okay, let's go ahead, move to adjourn, item 14.
I'll make that motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Wait, wait, wait. You got it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, we are adjourned.